Move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 (for e) for the purpose of determining positions relative to a matter that may be subject to negotiations concerning incentives for several potential economic development projects within the city. And that's 1567. 1566, an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 (for e) for the purpose of instructing negotiators regarding Tower Road right-of-way.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McAdonick.
Second.
I have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion is carried. We will go into executive session. The plan is to be out here at 7 o'clock to resume the meeting. So anybody in the audience that wants to go grab a bite to eat or something, you can plan on it at 7 o'clock. So now we're in executive session and we'll be back.
See, we're missing... Jim. We're missing Rick, that's all. Oh, okay, so we aren't missing him.
Yeah, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order of the City Council of Commerce City, October 5th, 2015. We just got out of executive session. Thank you to the audience for bearing with us. So, first things first, I would like to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, please keep in your hearts and prayers, Councilman Benson and his family. He lost his mother this last weekend, and I am sure he'll appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if I could get the staff to pass around the microphone and allow the audience to introduce themselves. Thank you.
Good evening, Chris Fidler, superintendent of school, School District 27J.
Ellen Howes, citizen and a member of the Board of Adjustments.
Gier Mussern.
My name is Shirley Henne.
Libra Joder, Commerce City Historical Society.
Phil McCall.
Abel Salas.
Barry Smith.
Doug Hinden with IT.
Derek Ross, South Adams County Fire Department.
Susan Nolan, I'm a visitor from Ashland, Oregon.
I'm Kim Messina, I'm with Brighton and Commerce City Victim Services.
Troy Smith, Police Department.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Michelle Claymore, Economic Development.
Michelle Hill, Economic Development.
Will Consegre, Economic Development.
Good evening, Doug Morris with Peter DeFries Court.
All right, thank you all for being here. First item on the agenda is going to be Proclamations and Recognitions. The first item out of Proclamations, Recognitions, is Domestic Violence Awareness Month Proclamation. Mr. Gaylor, would you please read the proclamation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. City of Commerce City, Colorado, proclamation: Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, affecting over four million Americans each year; and whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incident of domestic violence; and whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average; and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity; and whereas the Commerce City Brighton Victim Services Unit served 1,039 domestic violence victims each or last year, providing services to those in need and community education on how to stop the heinous crime; and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City hereby proclaims the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge the citizens of Commerce City to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. In witness whereof I have had to set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed on the 5th day of October 2015, City of Commerce City, Colorado, Sean Ford, Mayor.
Thanks, Bob. If I could get a representative from the Police Department to come forward. Chief? And anybody else in the audience that you want to have up here to accept this proclamation? Title's been read, I need a motion. Mr. McAldoney.
Thank you, Mayor, I would move to approve the proclamation on Domestic Violence Awareness.
Thank you. Mr. Amador.
Second.
Our motion is second to approve the proclamation is read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Chief, you want to say a few things before we come down?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Troy Smith, the Police Chief here with you tonight, and Kim Messina, our Victim Services Coordinator, is here. I believe this is the first opportunity she's had since we merged our Victim Services to appear before you as the City Council this evening, and she had a few words that she wanted to say prior to the proclamation. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, as the chief said, my name's Kim Messina, and I'm the Brighton and Commerce City Victim Services Coordinator. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you so much for supporting not only Domestic Violence Awareness Month, but also the Combined Victim Services Unit. Under the tremendous leadership and support of Chief Smith and Command Staff and the men and women of the Commerce City Police Department, we've actually been able to meet victims on scene where they're at and provide those such valuable services, and I just want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you. Now, if the council will join me down front. Now, if the council will join me down front. accepting that? No? All right. Mr. Gaylor, will you please read the proclamation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. City of Commerce City, Colorado, proclamation: Whereas Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month each year by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America; and whereas the observation started in 1968 and was expanded in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15 and ending on October 15; and whereas Hispanics have had a profound and positive influence on our country through their strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service. They have enhanced and shaped our national character with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community; and whereas these positive contributions are evident within the Commerce City community where thriving businesses, cultural arts, and neighborhoods exist, creating a meaningful social fabric of which all residents can engage and learn. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City declares September 15 through October 15, 2015, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, recognizing the importance of the Hispanic community within Commerce City. In witness whereof, I have here on to set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed on the 5th day of October 2015, City of Commerce City, Colorado, Sean Ford, Mayor.
Thanks, Bob. I need a motion.
I would move to approve the proclamation recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, the motion.
Councilwoman Elliott, a motion and a second. Proclamation's been read, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I don't know who this is going to be going to, Laura, but we'll make sure it gets to them. All right, next item, citizen communication. As we approach the election season, council would like to remind candidates for elected office that political activity in city buildings is prohibited per Resolution 2008-60. This includes campaigning from the podium. Please give your name and address for the record when I call you up here, and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Start off with Derek Ross.
Sorry. Mayor, council, I'm Derek Ross, the South Adams County Fire Department, and I'm here on behalf of Chief Venceal. I'm here for any type of information, questions the council may have for the fire department, and if I can't answer those, I will have the chief email you guys back and contact you with any questions you have. I'm just here for information purposes. Is there any questions from the council?
The council have any questions for Mr. Ross at this time? Mr. Teeter?
Thank you, Chief, for showing up tonight. Can you, as far as what you know so far, can you give us an update on Station 4 as to where it's at?
I believe right now they've broken ground, they have torn it down. I believe the plans are in the city at this time. I believe right now we're waiting to receive the plans back to get started, but I'm pretty sure it's in the process in the city. So, I can give you further info when I contact Chief Venceal tomorrow.
Great, anyone else? No, Derek, I just wanted to say thank you for coming in. I did get the chance to speak to Chief Venceal earlier in the day. He told me that we were gonna start having fire department representation at our council meetings. And so what I would say is to the public that's here, if anybody here has any comments or questions, to grab you, and you can go out in the hallway and discuss whatever that concern or answer whatever question that may be, but I appreciate you being here.
Yes, thank you, thank you, council.
All right, Shirley Henney?
Yes.
Okay, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Shirley Henney. I live at 6390 Olive Street, Commerce City. I'm here tonight because of all the speeding that goes on between Monaco and Quebec down 64th Avenue. Doesn't happen all the time, but usually in the evening hours, cars, semis, they go faster than the 35 miles per hour. Even in the middle of the night, the semis will come past my house and wake me up, I'm sleeping, they go by so fast it rattles the house, and I'm sure they're going above and beyond the 35. I don't know what to do. Just, I think they think it's fine to go speed down that part of the road, because there's no stop signs, no red lights, so they go quite a few blocks, just normal cars speeding. What I'm here tonight for is maybe I could get some red lights around the stop signs on Olive Street, because a lot of kids cross that intersection, you know, to go to the park. Well, it's getting dark out early now, but I don't know. Who do I call about the speeders? Even today, when I was out raking the grass early in the morning, cars were speeding, people on their cell phones, people texting, you know, because I live right there, right next to the street.
The person actually is in the room. Chief, do you have anything you want to say about, you know, what the process is, who she needs to get a hold of, how she can get some attention?
I don't know if anybody believes me about these cars speeding, but they do. I'm always thinking, where's the police officer? You know, aren't they hiding somewhere so they can catch these speeders? I think they just do it for enjoyment. I don't know about, not all the semis speed, but maybe in the middle of the night, you know, or whenever, you know, they don't need to go uphill or downhill, it's just even flat ground, they don't need to speed. You know, it's residential, you know, and...
I understand that, and I have the Chief of Police, who's the head of public safety for the City of Commerce City, standing right here. Chief, did you want to say anything on the record, or wait until afterwards and talk to Ms...
Henney.
Is it, how do you say your...
Henney.
Henney, okay. So, he'll take you back and talk to you right now, but I'll take care of it.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Henney, I just wanted to comment to you, I actually, this is me right here, Ms. Henney, I'm over here. Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I actually witnessed that firsthand. I was right there at the corner, your neighbor's house, it's just directly adjacent to you, and I had provided some information to the City Manager's Office, and I understand that this has been discussed, but as far as the status, I think that's something that we'll follow through. But I was there for about 30 minutes and witnessed people just at the stop sign and not even, it was a tow truck ironically, that just kind of paused for a moment and cut off another vehicle heading westbound on 64th Avenue. So, I do realize it's a problem, and just so you know that, I mean, and council, I'm gonna speak for council, we do know that this has been brought up before, and it is of great concern, but I just wanted to let you know that I did witness firsthand what you're explaining, maybe not at all hours of the night, but the time that I was there, it was on a weekend, it was very high traffic, so, just to know that, you know, we are taking that into consideration, and we'll definitely follow up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. All right, Abel Salas.
Excuse me, Mayor, I have to go to work.
Oh, you had to go to work?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And I guess, I think you're probably next. Barry?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. And good evening.
Good evening, good evening. First of all, whatever you're doing, keep doing it. Brighton looks great, I mean, Adams County's looking beautiful, so whatever you're doing, keep doing it. I'm here about the speeding in my, in the neighborhood, I live in Outlook Point...
Could I please get you to say your name and address on the record?
Barry Smith, I live in Outlook Point 12300 Village Circle East, 80603.
Perfect.
Man, the traffic is terrible. It's 257 homes in a two-and-a-half acre area, they're building 23 more homes in that area in the thousand feet from the big opening of my, from the opening of where we live into the community, it's about a thousand feet, just in that thousand feet, there are 24 kids that live just in that area right there, six of them are mine, but there are 15 under 10 years old just in that area, so the speeding is very heavy. I would just hope, I know you guys are busy, but I was hoping maybe we could get a study or something done in the neighborhood, you know, to find out what the problem is.
Well, I want to thank you for coming in tonight.
Sure.
Of course, we want to make sure that the community's safe. Now, the chief just stepped outside to talk to Ms. Henney, and what I would ask is that as soon as he's finished, that you would sit down and talk with him. I would ask the City Manager to look into and talk with Public Works about, and PD, about doing a speed study in that general area.
Yes.
But I definitely want you to talk to the chief, because he'll get some immediate action out there to try to get people to slow down.
Yes, I'm sure all the city council has noticed, the big semi tires broke up on the road everywhere. What I don't understand is, if the tire came off your truck, why can't you stop and pick it up? People are being killed on motorcycles, mopeds, because they hit those big pieces of tire and you lose control. Most of the ladies driving the small imports, once they hit that piece of tire, it's a done deal.
Yep.
So, that's a serious problem. Now, I do have six kids, so what I do on the month, monthly, I make my, I don't make them, but I get them out there to pick up trash and whatever, so we can give back to the community. So, we try to police our own area, but it's kind of tough sometimes.
Sure, and we have some special interest groups, like, I know there's one church that has taken on a section of road.
That's correct.
Help them keep things cleaned up.
That's correct, I see.
We want a good, clean, vibrant community, and I appreciate the work that you do in your neighborhood.
Thank you.
And I want to make sure that you get with Chief Smith, so we can get some resolution to your speeding concerns.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you, council, I appreciate it.
Anybody have any questions for Barry before I let him go?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening.
Take care. All right, next we have Chris Fidler.
Good evening, Mayor Ford, members of council.
Good evening.
I had the great pleasure spending last Tuesday evening with you, so I'll be a little bit more brief than I was last week, I apologize. But here to talk about the resolution you all are considering in support of 3C, which is our bond initiative in 27J. As you all know, and for the benefit of the audience, we're asking for $248 million for a third high school, fifth middle school, elementary school 12, elementary school 13, and renovations and repairs around the entire district. Well, I'd say most of all is how grateful I am for our partnership with the City of Commerce City, and I have tonight, and I thought about, the time was appropriate for this, given you haven't voted on the resolution this time around, but I'm very grateful for your past support. Last year, as you know, you supported 3B, and what I would do, I'm gonna present the staff tonight, and they can pass these out as they see fit, but they're three School District 27J Hero Awards. First one to you, Mayor Ford, and your entire council. And then we have two members of the council who are, in my, in my mind, have gone above and beyond, have been active in everything from knock and drops to postcard writing to every Thursday night for the last two years, it seems. But first, that's JD Carson, thank you for your hard work with the campaign in the past. And Councilman McAldoney, who's been an IM 27J Warrior now for the better part of two years, so. And I'm trying to be cautious, he told me not to campaign at the podium, but in any grades, I'm very grateful for the support that we've received from Commerce City. You all are considering a resolution tonight, City of Brighton will consider one tomorrow evening, ballots will be in the mail a week from today, so although Election Day is really that first Tuesday in November, the voting starts really next week, so, thank you for your support, and I wouldn't entertain any questions that I didn't answer a week ago if you might have them.
You know, first of all, I would say, I don't see any of the council really ringing in that they want to, well, now they are, but I want to say thank you to you, because without partnerships with our water district and our school districts here in Commerce City, we can't become the community that we want to become. We need that education piece so that our children and the resident, our residents' children are educated, so that they can carry on and expect more and be more deserving of what they have. So, we need that education piece in our community, not only just to educate our kids, but to attract businesses. CEOs won't move their companies here if there's not good education. You know, people that want to have an employment business here that employs people, they don't want to come here unless their kids can get educated and the best education. So, we want the best for our community, and I know that's what you're striving for, is to improve the district, to be able to create the opportunity for everybody to succeed. And what most people don't understand is, when the schools get too overcrowded, then we have a problem with building more homes or adding more to our community from a growth perspective. So, we have to work together to continue to grow this community in a proper fashion, and I applaud you for all the efforts to help try to bring the school district up to speed and to stay at the same pace as the city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Carson?
Thank you for coming in tonight, and thank you graciously for that award, but I do want to thank you, and I want to thank all the school employees. The dedication and the time that you put into our students, we can't compare that in a paycheck of what you invest into our students. And I also want to apologize that it's been so difficult for you to be able to go forward with not just desires, but actual needs for the children of this community. I truly do not understand, but these are our children, so anybody out there listening, we now have caused a situation that we have high schoolers under split schedules, high schoolers not getting lunches, high schoolers, I mean, it's absolutely haywire what has happened. Kids in the same family attending school at different times. I will give you the time right now, if there's anything you would like to say to the community out there who's listening, please do, but thank you.
I give it to the council, thank you, councilwoman. It's always, I forget we're broadcasting, so, you all are well aware, in terms of growth in the district, we have tripled in size since the year 2000, and the year 2000 we had about 5,000 students in 27J. We are, we welcomed 17,000-plus pre-K through 12th grade students to 27J this school year. We are on split schedules, we did this 10 years ago at Brighton High School, I think that was one of the main reasons that we were really successful in 2004, passing the bond to Bill Prairieview High School, many of you have ties to Prairieview. And we find ourselves now with not one high school, but two high schools on split schedules, each of those high schools have nearly 2,000 students, and as you mentioned, freshmen and sophomores roll in at 7:00 AM, get out of there about 2:30, quarter of 3:00, juniors and seniors come in after 9:00 o'clock, can be there as late as 5:00 o'clock. We're actually running double shifts on our transportation routes to make sure those kids get transported back and forth. We have nearly 100 bus routes that we're running, that's a challenge for us. What's been difficult for us this last year is we've taken resources to accommodate this split schedule because of, well, we planned to do that anyway, even had we been successful this last fall, but taking resources away from kids to accommodate our growth is harmful. As I've said publicly, and I'll say to the folks walking tonight, it shouldn't be this hard. Uh... shouldn't be this hard. Um, I haven't talked to anybody with kids in the school district that thinks a year-round calendar for elementary or a split schedule for high school is a great, is a good idea. Uh, many of you were at the board meeting on August 25th when our board referred this to the ballot. I want to thank you for coming out, uh, that evening and showing your strong support. And as you know, we had a room full of parents and community members, 300 strong. Uh, that evening, we had almost 2,600, uh, signatures presented through a pledge to vote to our board. And we had 29 people speak on the impact that split schedules are having on their families. Um, and despite all that, I couldn't be more proud of our, of our employees. You know, for the sixth straight year, we have the highest graduation rate in Adams County, Adams County metro districts. We have exceeded the state graduation average now for two consecutive years. We're just short of 80%. We're also proud of our staff. But the longer we don't find a better solution for space, and that's additional, that's additional schools, the longer we're going to suffer. So, thank you for the opportunity, reminding me that we're on DVD.
And, and thank you. Uh, sometimes we just can't get the message out enough. Um, and you know, if, if this means that you, you can only afford Starbucks three days a week instead of five, uh, please do it. So, thank you, and, and thank you so much.
Thank you, councilwoman.
Councilman McAldowney.
First, I'll say thank you. Completely unexpected, and I really appreciate that. Um, I think I'll, A, echo Councilwoman Carson's comments, and, and B, um, again, give you a couple of minutes here to speak to, uh, one of the questions that I get all the time, which is, what about all those tax dollars that I'm already putting in? And what about all those people buying pot? Why isn't that covering the cost of these schools?
[laughter]
If you can just, in a thumbnail. And then with that, um, I know the district has put together a really good FAQ. Point, folks, tell folks where they can get some additional factual information from the district on, on the projects themselves.
Absolutely. So, a couple of comments, Alfreda, cover all those bases. So, first of all, I'm frequently asked, frequently asked questions. We have that on our district website. Uh, it's also on the IM 27J website. So, it's a pretty comprehensive list. Uh, it's a great place to direct folks. If you don't have the answer, it's likely there. If it's not, feel free to have them email me, and I'll track down the answer. Um, we are challenged in 27J in that we have the dubious honor of being ranked 170th out of 178 school districts in school funding in terms of per pupil revenue and mill levy override money. So, the district was successful. In one time only in 2000, we passed a mill levy override. It was for three quarters of a million dollars. At that time, we had about 5,000 students. Now, here we are, 17,000 students large. Um, that generates about $44, $44, $44, $45 per student above the School Finance Act. And you're all well aware, and folks listening at home, aren't we're in year six of the negative factor from the state of Colorado in terms of the School Finance Act. So, we're not getting the full amount we should be from the state. And then on top of that, uh, we have not been successful locally, uh, like other districts, Boulder Valley, St. Brain, Aurora, um, they've been much more successful in, uh, passing local mill levy overrides. Obviously, Boulder is the most extreme example. We're at about $44 per student above the School Finance Act. They're at over $2,000 per student above and beyond the School Finance Act. Thank you for opening the door on the marijuana question. Um, so, the number that I hear most often is there's $40 million, um, in marijuana revenue, uh, that's going to be going to schools. So, first and foremost, that money is set to go to the best grant program, which is building excellent schools today. That is a competitive grant program, and that $40 million is available to all 178 school districts in the state of Colorado. So, and I'll, I'll use one project as an example on our ass from the bond. So, middle school five is slated to cost us, right at $55 million, okay? So, all the marijuana money that's available for the entire state wouldn't, wouldn't complete middle school five for us in this next bond project. Um, the other question south there is around cost. You know, I memorized the numbers a year ago because I thought that would be really important. I think, yeah, maybe four people asked me, what's this really going to cost me? Um, what I will share is this year will actually cost folks less. The ask is bigger, but the, the impact per household is actually smaller. We're at about $1.26 per hundred thousand dollar of, uh, home value. So, for the average homeowner in 27J, you're looking at about $40 or $45 a year. And that's not, I didn't misspeak, for the average homeowner, it's about 40, $40 to $45 per year. Um, so, make the, make whatever analogy you need to make there. Starbucks, a gallon of milk a month, a gas, a gallon of gas a month. I mean, just, it's, it's a very small ask for, for our homeowners and businesses, given the impact it'll have on our community at large. Um, I think that answered all of your questions. I hope it did.
It did. And I think the, I think just to kind of sum it up, the alternative here is nobody's riding in on a white horse to come and write a big check to build these schools. This is, you as a district have an obligation to serve every student in the district. You can't turn kids away. And physically, there is no space. The, the growth over the next couple of years alone, if you can just kind of...
Sure. So, um, to, to your point, this is our problem, right? So, it's, it's not just a school district 27J problem. It's, it's a Commerce City problem. It's a Brighton problem. It's a, it's a city of Thornton problem. We live in a great place, but you're exactly right, Mayor. Folks are not going to continue to move here at the pace we'd like them to, to, um, to increase revenue for you all through, through businesses here in the area. Because I know the first question they ask is about our schools. And I will tell you that, uh, folks aren't excited about split schedules. They're not excited about a year-round calendar. But this is our problem. So, the idea that developers aren't paying their way, uh, here's the deal. We can't force developers to pay. There's no impact being in the state of Colorado. We can assess those charges to developers. Um, you know, the, the con statement, I believe this, this score round is around that issue again. Developers aren't doing their part. We can't make developers do their part. I mean, it's just, it's just the truth of it. It's our problem to solve. I don't expect, uh, the state to sweep, to, to ride in on a, on a white horse and solve this for us. Uh, the governor spoke last week at the Great Education Colorado Luncheon, and is already planting the seeds of doom around school finance. His comment publicly last week was, he's, he's very com, or he's concerned, rather, that we will not be able to fund K-12 education in inflation plus growth, which is required under member 23. If you followed the Dwyer case, they just had a, a Supreme Court case on that issue. They've established base funding, but even now, the governor is saying it's probably not likely they'll be able to meet the, the base funding portion of that, of that requirement. Um, what else? Um, the longer we have the absence of the best solution, which is more space, the more complicated things are going to get. Um, so, we've eased into the split schedule. It's working as well as we could hope. But the longer we wait, the more we push those buildings and, and those cores. So, the cafeteria, the library, the gyms, they weren't designed for that. Both Brighton High School and Perriview were designed for 1,500 students. And then they, we add in the, the temporary classrooms, which always seem to be permanent, right? So, they're, they both can handle 1,800 students with the temporaries there. But again, they're both in excess of that today. Um, and as, as I look at the council, so many of you are tied to this problem. So, I see graduates, or parents of graduates from Perriview High School, parent of student Second Creek, the former voice of the Thunderhawks. I mean, it is, this is our problem. Um, but again, I don't want to stand up here and palm the podium too much longer. But bottom line, um, we're doing the very best we can with limited resources and the absence of space takes those limited resources and causes them to go into space mitigation as opposed to destruction for kids.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson.
Yes, thank you for appearing here tonight, Dr. Fiddler. Can you tell us the location of the, the new schools that would be built for high school, middle school, elementary school?
Absolutely.
Where would they be?
So, I'll run down the list for you, Councilman. So, uh, high school number three is scheduled to be at 136 in Yosemite, which is in the city of Thornton. Tell the bad joke, and I'm in Brighton. It's not in Brighton, but you can see it from there. So, it sits above on the bluff there. It overlooks Riverdale Road, overlooks Adams County Fairgrounds and the golf course there. If you're familiar with that area, which I'm sure you are. Uh, we don't have a site yet for middle school five. We believe that'll be in our west planning area, which is Thornton. Elementary 12 is, uh, we have a, a site for that right next to the reunion rec center. So, that'll be here in Commerce City. Elementary 13 is slated to be, uh, in Brighton Crossing, over behind the, it's their new King Supers in Brighton and 50th and Bridge. Um, we have, part of our plan is continued charter, charter partnerships. So, we have, we'd like a charter on the west side of the district. Uh, we have two charter schools in Commerce City, Bell Creek and Landmark. We have two charters in Brighton, Bromley East and Foundations. We don't have a K-8 charter in the west end of the district. We'd like to have that. Um, that's, that covers the, uh, we'll, we'll finish Brantner Elementary that we built half of that school out of the 2006 bond money. That was, it's the bonus building, as I always refer to it. We built that out of savings on the 2006 bond money and, uh, the interest on that. We built the core and one wing. So, we'll build the second wing on Brantner. That's over in Thornton. And the rest of that, every school will get something. Um, if you don't know, Perriview High School is celebrating its 10th anniversary this year, if you can believe that. Uh, Timmy Elementary, which I believe was the first school we built in Commerce City, is in its 15th year. So, even, you know, the quote-unquote new schools in 27J, it's hard to call 15-year-old schools new. Uh, so, we're having lots of maintenance issues with those buildings. And then we still have approximately 350 students a day in Brighton Heritage Academy, which is on Bridge and Eighth, Eighth Avenue in Brighton. And that building was built in 1926. So...
I, I presume that there have been some polls taken. Do you know what the results of those polls have been, about the results of the election?
I do. So, we last polled in July. Um, we were at a 54%, yes. That's exactly where we were a year ago, um, when we polled for the 2014 election. If you don't know, you know, I've got my constant daily reminder on my name tag. If you can't see it, it says 120. So, if you're not aware, that's, 120 is the number of votes we lost by a year ago. We lost by less than one-half and 1%. Um, all five metropolitan Adams County school districts were out a year ago. We lost by less than one-half and 1%, 120 votes. The other Adams County school districts had both a bond and a mill, and they were much less successful in their efforts. They were at about a 60-40 no. But it'll be, I have no doubt, Councilman, it'll be close again. I'm just hoping we end up on the right side of half.
Well, thank you. And I certainly do, too. And I know the council has already passed a resolution.
No.
Do we have...
You're going to consider it.
Tonight?
You're going to consider it.
Okay. I presume that it's going to pass.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes, Ms. Fiddler, thank you for coming in. Uh, questions I was going to ask, you already went over them. And I, I do appreciate you that you have said it over and over, uh, what it's like to make an investment, um, in your child and in the future of your city. So, I appreciate you coming forward and letting us all know what's going on. Because last week was a very informative meeting between the district plus Brighton, um, city council as well. So, thank you very much for, uh, diving deep into that, just a little bit of time you had.
No, no, thank you. And I would add, if I could, I'm supposed to be out pushing this, right? It's kind of, goes with the job description. I miss being in high school, honestly, being around kids every day. But I'm, as superintendent of schools, I'm supposed to be out. This is, I'm, I'm saying what I'm supposed to be saying, correct?
Right.
The fact that you all are behind this and see the need, I don't think anyone disputes the fact that we have a space problem. Um, so, when you all carry that message for me, that'll make the difference, folks. And not just here collectively, but the real test is when you're asked individually, how you respond one-on-one makes all the difference in the world. Um, so, I, I can, I'm grateful that you're considering the resolution tonight, but I would challenge you all personally, after the meeting, when they catch you at coffee or, um, wherever they might catch you, the grocery store, and they ask you, "Come on, Councilman, what do you really think?" I'm counting on each of you to say, "I really think we need space for our kids." Because that's, that's the truth, folks. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for being here this evening. And I just want to tell you, that meeting last week, collaborative efforts with, uh, our council and, uh, the school board in Brighton, uh, really spoke volumes of how we need to really partner up, uh, with our school districts. And, and I have to acknowledge, although I went through Adams 14 schools last year, I think we were having to divide and conquer, uh, because there were two ballot initiatives that were out there. But, um, I just want to tell you that I, I'm really happy with, uh, the great strides that I've seen over the last year. And even more recently, when I attended the tour on Friday of, um, Stewart Middle School, uh, there's just an energy there. And, and it just made me think, you know what? You're doing it anyway. Everybody's just doing it anyway, despite all the things that you're struggling through. And I realize the middle school's not directly impacted, but, uh, it's a district-wide, you know, feeling, if you will. And so, I just want to commend you and, and staff of, of keeping positive outlook and, and keeping a positive energy. So, just, again, thank you for being here tonight.
Mr. Amador.
Thank you for, uh, coming before us. Um, I, I think, uh, Crystal kind of scratched the surface about last year, there were a couple ballot initiatives, one for 14 and one for 27J. And just, I know that we're on camera for clarity, that, um, there was a rumor going around that the Adams 14 folks voted against the 27J, and the 27J voted against the 14, which was clearly not the case because, um, they're two totally separate jurisdictions. So, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that, um, we are one community within Commerce City, which we do have a physical barrier between us. But from our perspective, we are all one city. So, thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. And thank you for that. I had, that's a rumor I had not, I've heard lots of rumors in the last year. That's one I have not heard. So, I'll add that to my list of things that make me go, hmm. Yeah, you're exactly right. Uh, they couldn't have voted against it because it's not the same district. So, thank you.
Dr. Fiddler, I think it's important that you know that this council supports not only 27J and its success, um, District 14's success as well. Uh, we're building a great community and a great city. We have to have great education. Uh, with that said, I know that 27J is in multiple jurisdictions. And I heard you say earlier, uh, you know, tonight we're, we're going to be considering a resolution. I know tomorrow night Brighton's going to be considering a resolution. It'd be great if our partners in Thornton, and because this is televised, I hope it gets back to them, um, that they would consider a resolution as well. And since we have an Adams County commissioner in the room with us tonight, it would be great if Adams County would consider a resolution as well. Um, I think this is something that we need for our region, and I appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you. And I would add one, one issue on the, uh, one point on the Thornton issue. I had a, what I thought was a very productive coffee this morning with Jack Rethard from City of Thornton.
Great.
And that's just, it's just a bridge that isn't built, and that's probably as much our fault in 27J as, as the City of Thornton's. They've got four, five different school districts in their jurisdiction.
Sure.
And Mr. Rethard, and I discussed that today. And if nothing else, we've, we're discussing plans to build the bridge. But I'd be wondering if they've considered that.
I have one more. Um, Councilwoman Carson.
Um, since we're going to clear up some rumors, I know that, uh, it's been put out there that if we don't pass this, our students will be on split schedule in year-round school. Um, I think it's very important people understand, this really is not year-round school. This is track.
Correct.
Um, because I hear of a lot of people my age saying they think it's great, that our kids need to go to school 11 months a year. It is not. It's track. Your, would be either track A, B, C.
C or D.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so, so there is no misconception. And the other misconception is, is we, I do not believe we lost this due to no votes. We lost this due to the lack of people coming out and supporting and voting. Um, I watched everybody on election night. I watched Mr. McAldowney just go pale. Because the community truly does, and I do believe this in my heart of hearts, really does support this. But you have to come out and vote. You can't sit back and assume it's not your responsibility because you don't have children, or I had to work late. You can put the, the ballot right there in the mail. But if you don't vote, we're going to have these same difficulties. Because yes, when we poll, we have more support than not. But please vote. Um, and then I just wanted to do a shout out to the Thunderhawks because if I'm correct, they won their homecoming.
They did, yes.
So, congratulations, and thank you for taking the time to come in tonight.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add, um, the postcards. I didn't get to participate directly, but I had coordinated with Councilmember McAldowney. I took three stacks of 27, uh, postcards and filled them out over the weekend. And I just want to tell you, I think that was a nice added touch, uh, that differ, differs from last year. Uh, and so, I think that personal touch really means a lot. And I do hope that the residents realize that there was a lot of effort behind that postcard blitz. That's what I call it, a postcard blitz. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks again, Dr. Fiddler, for coming in.
You bet.
Good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our, uh, city council, uh, citizen, um, communication. So, next item on the agenda is going to be approval of the minutes. We have the minutes of July 20th, 2015. I'm open for a motion to approve the minutes. Councilwoman Carson.
I approve minutes of July 20th, 2015.
Thank you. Mr. Ballot?
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, saying nay. Motion's carried. Now, we have the August 3rd, 2015 minutes. I need a motion to allow the mayor pro temp and Councilwoman Elliott, um, to abstain from voting on the minutes of August 3rd because of excused absences. Uh, Mr. McAldowney.
Can I, uh, make a motion to excuse myself? Because I'm part of that, uh, absence. I think it...
Well, that wasn't on here. You weren't here that day?
Huh?
Were you not here that day?
You came in late. Didn't you come in later?
I don't know if you came in late.
I thought I did, too.
You came in later.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I was, uh, at the beginning. Perfect.
You don't have to abstain.
So, maybe, um, a little clarification is needed. When, um, just so that when you, as we move forward, uh, because this does come up, um, a few times.
Regularly.
Um, go, always go down a little bit further. Um, because in order to accurate, accurately reflect votes, I mark you... I mark you when you come in, or I make some kind of notation that you came in later. So, even though it's not up at the top, it is further down in the, into the voting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I need a motion to allow Mayor Protem, Bullock, and Councilwoman Elliott to abstain from voting on the minutes of August 3rd because of their excused absence. Mr. McIlhany.
So moved.
Mr. Douglas.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to allow for the abstention. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of August 3rd. Mr. McIlhany.
So moved.
Mr. Amador.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the August 3rd, 2015 minutes with an abstention from Mayor Protem and Councilwoman Elliott. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, we have the consent agenda as the next item on our agenda. And the consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote, and any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are two items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further decision and separate vote? I do. I would like to pull Resolution 2015-102, which is a resolution in support of a vote in November 3rd election on an agreement between Adams County and the city and county of Denver. Because we have representatives here from Adams County that like to have the opportunity to speak, I would like to pull that off. So, Mr. Gaylor, where in the agenda would that go? Let's go right before resolutions? Right at the top of resolutions? After the consent agenda, correct?
Right.
Perfect. So, with that said, there's only one item on the consent agenda, and I'd like to ask Mr. Gaylor, please read the title of that item.
We have to take a motion first.
To pull an item off the consent agenda?
No, to do the consent agenda.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. McIlhany.
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay. Mr. Bullock.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Now, Mr. Attorney, will you please read the title of the one item on the consent agenda?
Title of Resolution 2015-79, Resolution Approving An Agreement Between The City Of Commerce City and Brandon Sand and Gravel Company, LLC For 2015 Mill And Overlay Project, Project Number PM-2015-04.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Title has been read, and I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, consent agenda has been approved unanimously by the City Council this evening. Now, I'll move on to the item that was pulled from the consent agenda, which is Resolution In Support Of A Vote At The November 3rd, 2015 Election In Favor Of The Amendment To The Agreement Between Adams County And The City Of, Adams County And The City And County Of Denver Regarding The Denver International Airport. Is there a motion? Mr. McIlhany.
Move to approve the resolution in support of the vote of, or the, that of Adams County DIA.
Okay. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Before I ask for the title to be read, I know there's some discussion. I would ask County Commissioner Steve Oderesio to come to the podium.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. I want to thank you for considering this resolution, and I also want to specifically thank the City Council for all of their work and diligence over the last couple of years to get this through. In particular, Mayor Ford and Councilperson Teeter. I was blessed enough to work with them at the end. I came in in January, and I could tell you that I was very impressed, working not only with the representatives that you sent to the Airport Coordinating Committee, but also the overall push towards regional collaboration that we're seeing with this effort. I just want to say that this is something that we will all be very proud of in a few years, when we look back and say, look at, look at what we were able to do together, as opposed to what we could do when we're split up. And so, with that, I just want to thank you for considering this resolution, and thank you for all of your work. I can tell you that Sean and Rick would come back and report to us concerns and comments that you guys would have. And so, you had good representatives at the table, who were very sensitive to the desires, concerns, and needs of the rest of you. And so, I just want to also point out that the Denver Post this weekend endorsed this 1A measure. We also, voters right now are going to be getting their blue books, and there's going to be a short synopsis of why people should vote for this. There is no opposition, even in the blue book. Usually, there's somebody who writes something in there. Simply put, this is a, we look at this as a win-win for everybody. And I, once again, want to thank you for your support and all of your efforts in making this a reality, and if we can just encourage folks to get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oderesio, for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
And for all of the collaboration, once you were elected and you were part of the ACC, it's great that we finally came to terms with all parties. And I do believe in my heart that this is very important for our region. It will benefit all cities, regardless of percentage of breakdown of taxes, whatever that may be. Everybody will benefit with, with new and renewed development in and around the airport. It will help the state economics as well. And I think it's just a win-win situation. And I appreciate your efforts, as well as Mr. Teeter and all of the other parties and your other commissioners from Adams County. I think it says a lot for us to all work together, when we're used to working by ourselves. So, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have a motion and a second. You want to read the title there?
Title reads, Resolution In Support Of A Vote At The November 3rd, 2015 Election In Favor Of The Amendment To The Agreement Between Adams County And The City And County Of Denver Regarding The Denver International Airport.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried.
Let's see, Mr. Mayor, I might remark that it would be for ballot issue 1A on the ballot.
That's correct.
The resolution covers.
1A for DIA.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now that we're past the consent agenda, we'll go into resolutions. We'll start with Resolution 2015-90. Does council have any questions regarding this resolution? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this item? Saying none? I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve Resolution 2015-90. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. McIlhany.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution 2015-90. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, Resolution Finding Substantial Compliance Of An Annexation Petition And Setting A Public Hearing To Determine If The Proposed Annexation Complies With Statutory Requirements For Such Annexation AN-232-15.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item is Resolution 2015-98. I would like to invite the Economic Development Director, Michelle Kleymore, forward to speak about this resolution. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. The Economic Development Division is here tonight to ask for your approval of Resolution 2000-2015-98, approving a business incentive package for the Peter DeFries Corporation. With me tonight are two members of the Economic Development Team, Michelle Hill and Will Conseigra. The city's economic development team is working hard to help attract restaurants to Commerce City. Currently, we're working with the Peter DeFries Corporation, who is, which is the parent company for a fast casual restaurant called Dion's Pizza. They are based in New Mexico, and they have opened up their first Colorado location in Colorado Springs in 2012. The company currently has a second location under construction in Aurora, and we want Commerce City to be the location for the third opening. The company is considering a site in the southwest corner of 104th and Chambers, to construct a Dion's Pizza with projected new capital investment to the community of 1.7 million, 75 full and part-time employees, and about 4.5 million in sales over the first two years of operation. The incentive package that we would like you to consider is a 50% rebate on billing, permit, and plan check fees, a 10% rebate of a 3.5% city sales and use tax collected on construction materials, and a 40% rebate on the first two years of city sales tax collection for operations. This incentive package is estimated at about $76,400 and conforms with the city's current incentive program. The incentive is a rebate, and the company must begin business operations by December 31st, 2016, to receive the full value of the incentive package. After the December 31st timeframe, the percentage declines by 25% every three months. Now, I'd like to introduce Doug Morris, who's the Vice President of Real Estate for Peter, the Peter DeFries Corporation, who will give a little more information about the company.
Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilors. It's our privilege to be here. My name is Doug Morris. I do represent Dion's Pizza. Excuse me, Dion's Pizza. What do I say about it? I've been there for over 34 years, so I'm quite familiar with it. It's easy to speak about. We are a local New Mexico favorite. We serve fresh-made pizza salads and subs, and we make them to order. We don't pre-make anything. Currently, we have 20 locations, and as Michelle mentioned, we're about to open our 21st location here in, well, actually, in Aurora. We're looking forward to that. It'll be about a month. We employ over 1,400 people, and this restaurant here in the City of Commerce, as Michelle said, we'll hire about 70 people. We consider full-time 30, around 30 hours a week, and we'll probably have 20 to 25 people in that area. I have the privilege of working with great people. We have long, high-tenured senior management, leadership. We provide a lot of opportunities for young folks. We do predominantly hire teenagers. We seek first-time job applicants. We have an extensive training program. It's just a fun company to work with, and it's a privilege to be here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any, regarding Dion's.
Okay. Does the council have any questions at this time? Mr. McIlhany, you got a question? Okay. How about Mr. Bullock?
No, this is from previous.
How about Mr. Amador?
No.
All right. I would just say, thank you. Very excited to have a sit-down restaurant in our community, an opportunity for our teenage kids within this community, high school kids, to have the opportunity for employment. So, we're very much looking forward to you building a restaurant here in our community.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this item? Saying no one. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Amador.
Move to approve Resolution 2015-98.
Thank you. Mr. McIlhany.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, Resolution Approving Economic Development Incentive For Peter DeFries Corporation.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Hope to see a restaurant soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2015-100. Does council have any questions regarding this resolution? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions, would like to come forward and address the council on this item? Saying none. Mr. Benson? All right. We're just worried about you over here. All right. Saying none. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve Resolution 2015-100. 2015-100.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. City attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, Resolution Expressing City Council's Support For School District 27J Referred Measure 3C.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is ordinance is on first reading. We have ordinance 2072. I'll ask the city attorney to speak about this ordinance.
This ordinance came about as a result of a court case that the city was engaged in. It's important to recognize that the basis originally for the, for the provisions in the Commerce City Sales And Use Tax Code that we're dealing with here centered upon an effort by the city to tax a contract for use of tangible personal property, such as for use of a motor vehicle or trailer, tractor. A lease is clearly taxable. A sale is clearly taxable. So, the common strategy for many of these companies is, rather than to lease tangible personal property, they engage in contracts for use, which means they hire an individual owner-operator, where the company itself doesn't lease it, but pays for the use of the vehicle or the trailer by another company. So, it's a contract for use, where the vehicle stays in the possession of the owner of the vehicle, and the one desiring the service does not take possession like you would with a lease. So, that was the reasoning behind the amendments. The problem that the city encountered when it went to court, and the city was, the city efforts were challenged in court, and the city lost the court case, because the court found that this was an effort by the city to tax services, not tax the use of the tangible personal property, but to tax services. For example, services such as providing transportation of product. So, a company would hire an owner of a truck or trailer to transport the product, and that was considered a contract for services and not a contract for use of that truck. So, the services idea overrode the use of the, of the tangible personal property. Long story short, the city lost the case, because the court ruled it was a contract for services, and under our tax code, that type of service is not subject to our sales and use tax. So, the court specifically said, we asked the court, well, what part of the ordinance are you not satisfied with? And the court specifically spelled out what parts of the ordinance needed to be deleted. So, you have in front of you, or as part of what I sent out today, a, a, or the provisions in the ordinance that deleted parts of the ordinance. And so, what you have in front of you now is amending the tax code, showing the deletions in the ordinance, leaving intact the balance of the ordinance that has not been deleted. And that's really the basis of this ordinance that you have in front of you. Long story short, it's dictated by the council, or by the, the court ruling as to what needs to be changed, and you have in front of you those changes. So, we really don't have, if we're going to keep any provision in our tax code dealing with the use of tangible personal property, this ordinance needs to be adopted. with the use of tangible personal property, this ordinance needs to be adopted.
Counsel, have any questions regarding the ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Saying no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. McAdonny.
Move to introduce Ordinance 2072.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the City Attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Certain Provisions of the City of Commerce City Sales and Use Tax Code to Bring It Into Compliance With Requirements of Colorado Law."
Thank you. Ask for a roll call vote at this time. For the record, Ordinance 2072 is introduced unanimously on first reading. All right, next item is presentations. We want to do presentations. I have the Commerce City Historical Society, who's been waiting patiently in the back of the room. I'd like to invite Deborah Bullock and her team forward to make their presentation. Good evening, glad you're back from Greece.
Thank you, I am too.
Nice place to visit, but it's nice to be home.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
I'd like to introduce our board. I'm sure you know who they are, but Reba Droder is here, she is our historian. Thelma Cole is here, she's our membership director. Esther Hall is our Vice President and our President, Joanne Stevenson, is out of town at this moment. My name is Deborah Bullock, 6130 Ivanhoe Street. So we would like to just give you our annual update of what we've been doing for the Historical Society. We've been in our building for one year. Our board meetings, we have every month, the second Monday of each month. And we've also created an Advisory Board Member Association, basically, and it's Pam Meyer and Casey Hayes at the moment. Every year, we are going to nominate Advisory Board Members and we do that at our annual meeting in February. Our grand opening was September 19th, 2014, and it's called the Commerce City Heritage and Cultural Center and many of you were there. These are just some of the pictures of the opening. We're open on Saturdays from 10 to 2:00 and we're also open by appointment and we've actually had quite a few people come in and visit at times that they can make it. If they can't make it on Saturday, they call one of us and we open it up and we let special groups come in. We've had other groups come in with us and have meetings there and so we've had quite a few opportunities to let people come in and look at the museum. Our board meetings, like I said earlier, are monthly and our membership meetings are every other month and we've done that since we were incorporated and that has been pretty As of, for the first year, we had 690 visitors in the museum and we currently have over 130 members. Some of our exhibits that we have are from the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, memorabilia from businesses and organizations. And we have our main exhibit, The First Hundred Years of Commerce City, our Mile High Kennel Club exhibit. We have things from the Adams City High School, our fire department, city history, and some antiques that people have brought in. Our yearbook collection and paper binding and we, this is an ongoing project where we bind newspapers that we are collecting mainly right now from the Beacon. We have all of the Gateway Papers and we have about 20 years of the Sentinel Papers that have been done currently. And we have most of the yearbooks from 1950 to current from the Adams City High School. And we also have a couple off-site exhibits. We have one at High, low, Chuck Cashing and we have one at Key Bank and then we, there's a collage at Wells Fargo Bank that we didn't actually put together, but they did ask us to give them the material to actually put the collage together that you see on the left-hand side there. And we continue with our partnerships, of course, the City of Commerce City and we're always grateful of your support. Adams 14 School District, Stout Street Foundation. We currently have an office person who comes every Saturday and it's a volunteer position and she comes and helps us do office work. The South Island Fire Department, the Police Department, and our Savior Lutheran Church. These are our main organizations in the city that we currently partner with on various, various things that we do. Our programs that we continue to do are the History Coloring Book, Distribution and Coloring Contest, our Reading Book Distribution to 3rd grade classes in Adams 14, we do that in May, and history lectures, quarterly newsletter, holiday giving programs where we usually sponsor a family for Christmas, video histories, and the City History Bus Tour that we've developed. Our events are pretty consistent as well. We do our time-to-time luncheon every April and we do our Gene Klein Angel Awards. Our Central City Bus Trip is a fundraiser, garage sales are fundraisers, the Memorial Day Parade, we try to participate in that, the Victorian Tea, the Pioneer Picnic, and we're doing that at our museum now, and our Christmas Lights Bus Tour. Other highlights for 2015, we joined the Association of Northern Front Range Museums and they have monthly meetings and all of the museums in the northern range attend this meeting and it's a good association to be involved with because we have a lot of people that we meet and they give us, we can get ideas of what we can do in our museum and we give them ideas as well. So it's a good networking association to be involved with. We continue to record groundbreakings and grand openings, participate in community outreaches and other events, and we're visiting and establishing relationships with other museums in the community, in the, not just the community, but the whole northern range. And our historic preservation plan that the city planning department actually put together, you adopted that in January. So on September 19th, we had our first year anniversary and Joe Royball family partnered with that, with us on that event and we had probably 150 people come out for the event and it was a great day. You see Sean sitting in the barber chair? Our income sources continue to be through memberships, grants, donations, business and personal donations, and our fundraisers. And so far, we've been able to maintain what we have to do with those income sources. Our expenses that are, probably the biggest expenses we have right now are museum displays, buying cabinets, buying frames and things like that for the displays, our lease, our utilities, and program events that we have to pay for, and marketing office supplies and equipment. Our future goals, we always want to look ahead, not that we're ready to move out of this building right now, but you know, five years down the road, we probably will be wanting to move somewhere. And we would like to put in your mind and plant the seeds of a future museum on city land such as Victory Crossing, expand our days and hours of the museum. We want to start a building fund campaign for whatever our next museum is going to be. We continually have new exhibits, ongoing exhibits. We are starting to get a lot of people bringing us history, historical memorabilia into the museum. And we had a lot before we even opened the museum a year ago, so we still have a lot in storage. And expand our marketing options. We want to actually put some outdoor displays at the museum to be approved by City Council. These are a couple that we have in mind. The dog track gates, they're large, but there is a place that they would fit. And then we have, we want to get the Bronze Greyhound. And on the left is petition that, it's a milking stanchion thing that came out of the farm at the 56th Avenue on the Johnson Dairy. They're going to tear that down. So we cut about six feet of that out of the barn. And then we have Geronimo's Headstone. But Geronimo's Headstone is probably going to be going back to the cemetery because they called me today and said they've sold it and a man bought it and he's going to continue it as a cemetery and he would like to have Geronimo's Headstone back, so we might have to take that back to him. And then we would also, I just skipped over that slide, but we would like to have possibly in the future, a city historian position who would help us out from, you know, a position of actually knowing how to make sure what we're saying is really accurate and have the time to research some of the historical data that we're putting together. We would like to develop a citizens' history committee and we, that thought is to have people from different neighborhoods and we would meet, you know, three or four times a year and start writing the history of all the neighborhoods in the city. And we would like to develop an associate board member program so that when our board members go off of being on the board, we have people who can step in who know the business and know what we're doing so that we don't lose any ground when we change board members. We'd like to develop a high school, a local history class and curriculum and we are working with Adams 14 to do that right now. And to develop a Commerce City Historical Society Landmark Designation Program and that's aside from the preservation plan that the, it's already been put in place that you have not actually approved yet, but we would like to maybe have something in process now so that we can start designating some of our landmarks so that the owners know that they have a historic building before they start tearing it down or changing facades. And so I would like to ask our other board members to come up and if they have something to say, I'd like them to add. Reba, would you like to say something? Esther?
Thank you for letting us present this. I did want to let you know that the people at Rose Hill School has approached me and asked us to do a display of, at Rose Hill, they have a display cabinet. So that'll be another off-site display and they're really interested in the history of their school. We also have a phone display from Abilene, Kansas, that we paid to have phones shipped to our museum and we're going to be, Rose Hill's going to be the first 5th grade class that's going to come over and learn about communication, all they know is cell phones. So this is going to be really enlightening to them and we want to do it for 5th graders and 8th graders. So that's an up-and-coming, very soon event.
And being the membership director, we need all the help we can. We'd like to have lots more members, but we'd like to have you guys help us try to find more. We put out applications and they don't come in, so we need that. We need younger people too, not just the older people. We need younger people get interested and do volunteer work and stuff. So we'd like to have the help from all of you if you, if we could. We'd appreciate it. Even you guys could sign and come up and help.
All right, well, while you're standing there, Thelma, there's people at home watching you right now, so give them your best commercial on who to contact so that they can become members if they so desire.
Contact the Commerce City Historical Society.
How do you do that? How do you do that?
The number is 303-288.
2509.
2509. Yes.
All right. Remember, that's 303-288-2509.
Oh, sorry. It's 2590.
2590.
Yes.
Why they come to the museum on Saturday morning?
You could come to the museum on Saturdays and help me out when I work 10 to 2:00, but I'll be there Saturday.
All righty.
It's on the corner of 60th and Monaco.
Do you have a Facebook account that would attract younger members because that's how they communicate through Facebook and Twitter and things like that?
Good idea. We'll do that. We'll do that.
We'll try and put that in motion.
Okay, because I know you have a new assistant there on Saturdays that could probably set up a Twitter account and get it out.
You'd have to know, have to know more about technology than me.
Okay. All right, and Reba?
So, people will say, well, why is, why is this important? Because this, not only is it important for every town, but especially for this one because our history is not only, does not only belong to us, it belongs to the state of Colorado, the United States, and even the world. And people recognize us. I'm at the Refuge every Saturday, just about, and so we're getting like 300,000 people coming through from every country, every state, you can't even imagine. And we're a destination, so I don't know if you all know that, but it's absolutely the truth. They come here first often before they go to Rocky Mountain National Park. Now, who would have thought of such a thing, huh? But they come here to appreciate the beauty that we have, but also to, some have thanked us from Europe, they've come from Europe, thanked us for saving them during World War II. So it's very important that we keep our history. It belongs to the world and if we don't keep our history, someone else is going to rewrite it for us. And I know many people that have already tried to do this, are always trying to rewrite our history here to make it fit in a package that they like. So we have to keep our history and I wanted to tell you how wonderful it is that you have done this museum and that you have been so gracious about putting this history together. Without you, this would not be possible. And you've done also great things like with Adams 14 this past weekend, from Ann Freiberg right over here and Paula Baker to Public Works, Jay Snyder, Steve Ortega. Amazing gracious work for the children of Adams 14, your whole police department. Some of you, all of you have participated. I can't thank you enough. And I wanted to tell you what I heard this past weekend. We had about 2,000 children in this parade and we had about 1,000 at the bonfire, without incident, by the way, just darling children. And I was listening to some of the folks that had gathered to watch it and they were talking about museum things, they were talking about Adams 14, things just right here in the original part of Commerce City. And what they said was, they were so happy that this part of Commerce City has come back to life again and that is, of course, because of you and your staff. And so I personally am very grateful to you. If we do get a piece of land and build a museum, we have, for instance, Bobby Crowell's historic furniture from the 1700s, almost in mint condition, with carvings of her great-grandmother's face, it was her wedding gift, that has been valued at around $45,000 that we could have on loan from us from the Crowell family. So these are very, some of the things we have are extremely valuable and I thank you very much for what you've done to preserve all of these things.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's wait a second because I think there's several people that want to talk to you. Councilman Carson?
Thank you for coming in. You enjoyed your presentation. I always enjoy when you're all here. Your, your energy honestly is just...
And as a representative of the youth commission, if it's possible, I would love to have the youth commission attend, have one of their meetings, maybe once or twice a year or something.
Yeah, when we started talking about the associate board members, we wanted a youth on that.
But if we could just maybe have one of their, they meet twice monthly, and if they could have a meeting there and...
Yeah, to come to us and have a meeting at our place?
Correct.
Yes, we want to do that.
Come to the museum, and if they could see that.
Yes, that would be great.
Have you all there and share your energy and knowledge. But yeah, that would be great. When you spoke of having youth and getting them engaged, please invite them. So, but thanks for everything and welcome back.
Oh, thank you. And when you're ready to come, just tell us when, we'll be there.
Yeah, I'll leave that up to Renee to get it worked out between Julia and the Historic Society. How's that, Renee?
That sounds good.
Okay.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thanks for coming tonight. The other day, about a month ago, we did miss a little history. And this is where we need a little help out there from the public. They were tearing down the old rainbow bread sign and putting up their new sign, I believe it was bimbo. We were not present, we did not get any pictures of that. It was over before we realized it was happening. So if the public out there sees history happening, and they can stop and flash a few pictures for us, as things change throughout Commerce City, as the world moves along, we'd be grateful for that. And so I don't know if the city, if we knew they were going to change that sign, if they had to have some permission to change that sign or not, but you know, if things like that happen, if we can get an up, we can get a little update that it's going to happen, we can get somebody out there to take those pictures. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. As always, thank you for being here this evening. I just want to tell you, I want to commend you on the tour that we took over, actually not over the weekend, it was Friday, for the leadership program. It was very enlightening. There was a lot of history that I thought I knew and apparently didn't. So we have a lot of rich history that a lot of people are unaware of. And I thank you for the book that you provided for us as well. But I think the one that touched me the most was the arsenal. And that, I won't go into detail, but it just, if we have a moment just to read the story on it, it's just incredible. And growing up here as a baby, up through, you know, now my adult childhood, if you will, I am proud of all the things that we have accomplished over the years. And I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that you do. And any way that I can help to try to recruit some young blood, if you will, I'm more than happy to assist.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McAdonick?
I'll echo a couple of the comments that we've heard. First, I want to say thank you. I think the thing that is so neat about what you're doing is you're a living example of what happens when you believe in something. And you hold to that belief that it's possible, that it needs to happen. If you don't do that, these things just don't happen. And it can be a very frustrating, long, tedious path to get folks on board. And clearly, that momentum is building. To have physical spaces, as you guys mentioned, to have the ability for people to start to see and touch that, it's one thing for people to tell stories and, you know, hear it, but to be able to touch it and see it and feel it is a whole other thing. You know, to sit and hear Reba's title of historian is so, suits her so well. My first days on council, and my early exposure to council was, I was fortunate to be able to have Reba as my history teacher. And I put considerable energy into trying to understand those things that I didn't understand. And so thank you for what you guys are doing. I think, you know, to hear sort of around the, you know, around and about the little stories that, you know, whether it's the kids in the coloring books each year, and the recognition that they start to develop of their community. We have a very awkward community in so many ways, but there's so much to be so proud of. And so the work that you guys do to help plug kids into that history is huge. I love the ideas in your future plans about extending those educational opportunities. As somebody who's in telecommunications, your program is exciting. You know, my daughter saw a dial phone not long ago, and you know, at 10 years old, that's, you know, it's not something that made sense, right? I mean, kids don't know payphones anymore. Kids don't know, you know, dial phones. And so being able to expose those things and to hear about the partnership that you've got to make that happen, I think it's just indicative of what's possible, right? This is just the tip of the iceberg, so keep it up. Great work, guys.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you ladies for coming here and giving the presentation. I've known most of you for over 10 years now, and you do come with a wealth of knowledge and history in this city. And you're right, we need to capture that and move forward and teach our young kids because right now, everything for them is right on their hand on a device, which is, you know, you can look at history, but actually to live through it, that's history. We just had the dog track that just got demolished, and now we have a boys and girls club on there. So we need to look around and really take things in because our city is about to change. We have light rail coming in, and hopefully we can have some time lapse photos of what it is today and what it's going to be tomorrow. Because truly, this is not, this is not going to be the same Commerce City here in 10 years. Things are going to be reformed and enhanced, and I think people are really going to appreciate that. But you're also going to lose that history too. And to know that it used to be both, it used to be two bowling alleys here. I mean, there's a lot of things that have happened here in Commerce City people don't realize. We have a, we're the metropolitan city within Colorado that has a professional soccer team. So that's huge. So I appreciate everything you guys have done and doing and moving forward. This is an opportunity for Commerce City, so I appreciate that.
You know, I'd like to thank you all. You do a lot for this city, and I don't think you get the recognition that you deserve. Because just in the short amount of time since I was in high school, you know, we were a community of eight, nine thousand in population. We're over 51,000 in population today. And we remember as kids watching the military vehicles come on and off the arsenal. We were one of the only cities in the state of Colorado to have, I think the only city in the state of Colorado to have an arsenal, that helped the military to design weaponry to help us win World War II. We're the only city in the state of Colorado outside of Denver to have a major league stadium. We're the only city in Colorado that has an oil and gas refinery. And there are certain things that make us different than other places. And you all remember, we had the two roller skating rinks, we had two bowling alleys, we had, you know, Little Pizza Haven and their great cannolis. Those are all things that we remember. And you have to remember, we are three or four times in population as to what we were back then. And there's a lot of people that are new to our community that need the opportunity and to have the access to the history that we share that makes Commerce City so, so very, very special to all of us that grew up here. And I'm really glad to see the revitalization and the feeling of the partnerships between the school districts and the fire district and, you know, that sense of being of back when you had Al Crow and all the way up through Dave Busby, and now during my time and my father's time before me, to enjoy that rich history that Commerce City has to offer. But if it's not preserved, nobody's going to remember that it's there. I just recently had the opportunity to spend some time with the class of 1966, or 65, rather, at their 50th reunion. And then I just had my own 30th reunion from Adams City High School. And we sat around and we talked about all those special places to us, like Scotty's and the A&W and all the different things we had. And I find it very hard to believe that when we were such a small city, we had a lot of choices in food. And now we're 51,000, and we're having a hard time getting places to sit down and eat other than Mexican food. So it would be great to see some good hamburger joints and, you know, some sit-down restaurants that could get back to being vibrant. We want to see Derby like we remember Derby. And a lot of people drive through Derby and they go, yeah, okay, but they don't know what it was. And it was a very special place for us when we were young, to go up there and have a hamburger at the snack basket and bowl a couple frames. It was unbelievable. And I think that's what drives people like you to help with the history because of all the good memories. So thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Thank you.
We just really want you to know one more thing. This history class that we're working out with Adams 14, it's a real class. It's being, the curriculum's being written now, and it's an accredited class. So that is an amazing principle over there that would allow such a thing and recognize the great history that is here. So I wanted to tell, we're going to have an accredited history class of Commerce City.
Great.
One more thing. I was approached by the students and the principal at Les Arnold High School, and they wanted to know what Les Arnold, why it was named Les Arnold. So I brought Mr. Arnold into the school to speak to the students, and if there's not history there at 96 years of age, and he started here when there was 18 educators in this district. It was really enlightening to those students.
Great. Thank you, ladies. You mean so much to this community.
Thank you. So we would just like to tell everybody who's watching that we're open on Saturdays from 10 to 2, and our address is 6505 East 60th Avenue. Our phone number is 303-288-2590. So if you can't come on Saturday, call us and we will schedule another time for you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. All right. Next item of business, administrative council business. Is there any administrative council business this evening? Mr. Douglas?
Oh, yeah, I have some, but I'll, hold on a second. Okay. Yes, I had a question about the turning into the Lutheran High School off of 104th, just below going west on 104th from Landmark. It just seems kind of odd how that is because of the visibility of those two islands. I know they cut some down so you can turn in, but to actually turn out the facility and go west seems to be, I mean, both seem kind of dangerous, but you do have a better view coming, going west and turning left than you would going out of facility, going across traffic and turning, sorry, I'm sorry, going west from east, turn into facility is fine, but when you're leaving the facility and have to cross traffic that's not wide enough, it's not like it's a huge intersection. I could see another incident like Potomac, which is a lot more space, and there's a, the land around there is lower because you don't have those high medians right there. And I do understand that they did get a permit for that, to have that be able to work.
In answer to Mr. Douglas's question, yes, permits were necessary to do that work in the city's right of way, run it to the development plan that was approved for the Lutheran High School. We can pull some information together, provide it back to city council, an upcoming city manager update, while at the same time verifying that the work they've done meets the city's standards.
Okay, because it's a sightline. It's really high in those medians right there, and we have foliage trees and all that that are in line there with sight. And I could, you know, see that be a huge concern. Now they have cones there, so no one can access it as of right now, but when that does open up, it could create some problems.
Again, we can pull some information together, including some background of the city's standards that would relate in this case.
Okay. And the other thing too, traveling up and down Highway 2, just to the east of Highway 2, there's that construction lot, has big trucks and everything, and then next to it, another storage, and then there's a used car lot there as well. On my way down today, a truck, semi truck with a long flatbed was trying to, well, it was turning left. And, you know, I mean, it wasn't running fast, but you have traffic that was 55 miles an hour. So since we are going to be operating as far as, I mean, maintaining Highway 2, what kind of rights do we have to make that a ride-in, ride-out, so that we don't have that cross traffic?
We'd be happy to look into that. As council knows, we do have jurisdiction over Highway 2. However, those particular properties are still located in Adams County, in unincorporated Adams County. So I'm not sure what authority we have to impact their existing access in and out, but we can certainly check into that.
Okay. Because as we widen that section, is there the ability for them to turn in there, or do we have the right to only grant them or maybe force them to do ride-in, ride-out?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. I believe because they have full movement access there now, they're entitled to that, even though we're widening the road, but I'll have to check with staff.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Amador?
Thank you, Brian and Mr. Attorney, Bob Gayler. I did send an email. I got some correspondence about the tax code for the Commerce City Youth Association, CCYA, from Chuck Ingram. And there was some confusion about the tax ID certificate. And so I know I did send the email just a little while ago to look into that, and I just see that Brian responded that we will look into that and see where we are as far as state exempt code for exemption certificate versus a city in a home rural deal. So that was my...
I see where Brian referred that to Cheryl Carstens, our finance director, which is certainly the appropriate thing to do, because what she will be checking and advising is that a separate certificate of exemption is needed from the state of Colorado for state sales tax, and the city issues its own certificate of exemption. So I think it's just a matter of lack of communication here, and he's not understanding. He simply needs one from the city as well as one from the state. But that's, that'll be straightened out when our finance director looks at it, I'm sure.
Very good. Thank you. Just keep me in the loop that way. I do see Chuck out occasionally, and I'd like to be able to have some knowledge in my pocket for when I talk to him, so thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes. Back on June 15th, I made a request of the city to have an inventory or just kind of look at and get back to council on how much infill we have here in the southern part of the city, so we could actually figure out what we have here that we can use to grow, not counting the dog track. You know, just different infill lots. And it was kind of after the gentleman that was building over on 64th, that was a rural townhouse. And it coincided with that, that I'm just trying to figure out what we have as infill. If you, if they could get back to me and let me know, or so, before we lose the time, find out what we have. Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Teeter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, we, I've been getting quite a few complaints about the weeds along Quebec on the west side. They've reached their probably as high as they're going to grow the rest of this year, and they need to be, that grass needs to be cut down for the winter. The east side looks great, but that west side needs a lot of work.
Can you tell me approximately where that you're getting the calls were on?
Well, it's the people that are facing the east along Quebec. They can't even see Quebec no more because the weeds are so high. I mean, not the weeds, the grasses. We got to get the grasses cut down along Quebec again. It's that time of year again when, I'm sure they've already went to sea... They can't even see Quebec no more because the weeds are so high. I mean, not the weeds, the grasses. We've got to get the grasses cut down along Quebec again. It's that time of year again when, I'm sure they've already went to seed, so it's time to get those cut down.
I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Teeter. I would agree. I've been noticing they are awful town. Any other administrative council business? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I have one more thing. Getting some calls and all about, and I'll tell you, we just saw the release of the black-footed ferrets on the arsenal. But are we working with the HOAs that are around these different developments against their development in the HOA right-of-way in open space with the city and see what we could do about prairie dog controls or what exactly is going on because people are saying some dogs, those prairie dogs are getting in the yard, they're worried about disease and all, and just coming in contact with those little creatures.
Wild animal.
Okay.
You know, Brian, I'd have you check into that, but I believe that goes to the fish and wildlife because it's a wild animal, and we don't have jurisdiction over wild animals. However, I think that the HOAs could probably have their own management program if they so desired, but I don't want people at home or in the audience to think that that's a city function when it comes to wild animals. But there are resources out there to help keep them at bay because we live around the nation's largest urban wildlife refuge. All right. Anything else as far as council communication? Seeing none, we'll move into reports. Mr. Gaylor.
The only thing I have to report is Karen Stevens will be acting city attorney starting tomorrow, early morning tomorrow, and I'll be back in the office on October the 16th.
All right. Well, have a good vacation. City Manager, McBoom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did send out via email just prior to tonight's meeting, this week's edition of the city manager update. There's essentially two updates in it. One relates to the Nine Health Fair, which is coming again to Commerce City on Saturday, November 7th. As part of that, folks who attend the health fair will have the ability to do a free blood draw and some services related to that, but they do need a voucher to be able to access that free service. So, I believe we've distributed to you vouchers so that you can help distribute those vouchers out into the community. Those vouchers will be distributed in a number of different ways, but any help you can provide in getting those vouchers in the hands of folks that might be able to use those services would be great. And then, secondly, I hope you saw the story on Channel 7 News a couple of weeks ago about our proactive sex offender outreach program. We got two nice bits of feedback back from the community that we included in the report tonight, along with a link to the story on Channel 7 in case you didn't get a chance to see it. So, it's a very good proactive program that we're very proud of and wanted to share that with you. Also, we've got a district update from Representative Pearl Mother, our monthly development report, and as always, a look ahead at the city council work schedule. So, thank you.
Mr. Benson.
Yes, well, last Friday, I buried my mother in the city of Nacogdoches, Texas, next to my father. And I really want to thank the council and the city for the flowers and the thought behind them that was sent. Very nice display of flowers, and they're still there at the gravesite. So, thank you all very much.
Sorry for your loss, Jim. Mr. McAlvey.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I just wanted to follow up on the Nine Health Fair item. In terms of the vouchers, are we, do we already have folks reaching out to the district, each of the school districts, in terms of making those available? I would think that if we can make some vouchers available to the school nurses and buildings that fall within the districts, that might be a great opportunity to get some targeted linkages. And I don't know if that was already on the list or other avenues.
I believe that's occurred. We'll make sure they've got plenty, and if they need more, we'll send them more.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. McBoom?
Just one quick follow-up item. We did take some photos today of the black-footed ferret, black-footed ferret event out at the refuge, and I think Ms. Halsted can fire that up if you'd like to see the photos from the event today.
I would. And can I run through my report real quick?
Absolutely.
And we'll have the great black-footed ferret release. All right. I did attend the International Advisory Council, which is a council that I was appointed to by the mayor of Denver, and it's about looking at how to make our community more viable for economic development in the international scheme worldwide, how to better welcome people coming into DIA from foreign countries. It is gaining some strength, and I'm excited to be a part of that. Attended Rotary, and then several of us all went to the Senior Volunteer Recognition Dinner, which was great until we heard about Emma Goodenough and her house burning down and her needing some help. I did reach out, and several council members helped me. We reached out to the county, we got in with Social Services, they immediately contacted Emma, and they're giving her all the help that she can handle. We had, let's see, I had a meeting with Crystal and Michelle Claymore with a restaurant prospect last week, which was great. Thank you, Crystal, by the way. Joint meeting with Brighton and 27J School District. Several of us attended. It was really a good meeting. I'm great to see the relationship continuing to build. Again, Rotary. And then, I did attend the Metro Housing Coalition 2015 Political Forum. The topic and the speakers, the panel that was up there was on the 1A for DIA campaign. I had a lunch meeting with Mike Dino, had the, several of the council, went to the QCF Wine Tasting Event, which by the way, kudos to the QCF, they did a great job. The place was packed, and it is, it is a much growing event from last year. And then, issue 1A breakfast with the Metro North Chamber of Commerce. I sat on a panel discussing and pushing the 1A for DIA campaign. And then, today, the highlight, and one of my favorite things that I've done as a mayor, and that includes all the past years, not just this term, was the opportunity to go out with my colleagues and release an endangered species, the black-footed ferret, reintroduced today at the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge. So, Michelle, that's your cue. Oh, you have them. All right. Let us see what we got.
Would one of you who are there like to narrate what we're seeing in the photos?
Yeah, we're seeing Mayor Proton with his hat turned backwards and sunglasses on, holding a black-footed ferret reintroduction sign. We have several people from the Wildlife Refuge, Happy Haynes, former council member and current just-appointed Parks Director for the city of Denver. Let's see, John, what's his name? Ash?
Dan Ash.
Dan Ash, the head of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I don't remember the lady's name from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
Regional Director.
Regional Director. And then, we have our refuge manager.
Dave Lucas.
Dave Lucas. We have Mr. McBoom, Councilman Douglas, Councilman Benson, myself, and a good friend of mine, Scott Sisco. Getting ready to open the cage and let the little booger out, but there's our council members and Happy Haynes again, getting ready to open the door and let the, let the ferret free.
How feisty the ferret was.
Oh, it was, it was making all kinds of...
If I might add, there were several different ferrets released today.
Oh, yeah, there was 30.
Everybody was divided into small groups, and council was able to release one of the ferrets.
Yeah, 30 ferrets, and we got the opportunity to release one. There, the door's open, waiting for it to come out, and it doesn't come out, and it still doesn't come out, and we're still waiting. There it is, sticking its head out.
Now, what you don't see here, what you can't hear here is the noise it was making. It was making a lot of noise.
It was a happy ferret.
They were helping it out, and they gave me a stick, so I'm glad I didn't have to use my fingers because it was eating the stick.
Should be noted, everybody but these three people were about 60 feet away because this is a very dangerous area.
And there it is, getting ready to go down the hole.
And they note that each one of these ferrets eat 100 prairie dogs a year.
Well, the females eat 100 prairie dogs a year, and the males can eat up to 150 prairie dogs a year. We released 30 ferrets, and that means thousands of prairie dogs a year. And then, the last piece was I got to feed it some prairie dog as a first meal, and it was extremely enjoyable, and I hope that this species really flourishes on the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. It's great to have them back in their homeland and their short grass prairie to thrive.
So, thanks to Michelle Halsted for taking those photos. There's a lot more that were taken today. You have a Dropbox link to all the photos, and I think a bunch of them are being posted to the city's Facebook page.
Good.
So, thanks.
And it was absolutely an enjoyable afternoon.
Very.
Of the things we do, this was one of the funnest things we've done.
And you know, just a short piece about the ferret, the black-footed ferret. They at one time were deemed extinct, and a rancher's dog showed up with one at his home.
A dead one.
Yeah, in his mouth, a dead one. He brought it home. And so, researchers went out and they found one colony left surviving in the wild, and they were able to get 18 ferrets out of that colony and put them into a rehabilitation-type program, and were able to successfully breed the black-footed ferrets back into enough population, and they were able to then be released in different areas. And they'd been released in Montana, Wyoming, several places in Colorado, New Mexico, Arizona, and I might be missing one. However, this particular ferret, they said each one of these ferrets that were released today, and there were 30 released, that they have to run down and kill three prairie dogs before they're eligible for release to show that they have the ability to hunt and survive on their own. So, I really hope that they do well. The whole goal is to get these 30 breeding in their natural habitat, and I guess they breed like rabbits from what we were told today, so they could have a lot of young throughout the year. And it's that next generation that will truly go back to having a wild species because these were hand-raised, and we're looking forward to that next generation. And because of how quickly they can breed, we can get the population back up at the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge fairly quick. However, what was killing them off was primarily disease, distemper and things of that nature. So, they're in more of a controlled environment, and I hope they do well. You can say a few things.
Also, if you want to see the black-footed ferret in its natural habitat out at the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge, they have a ferret exhibit out there that has two ferrets in it, and one of the ferrets, the female ferret in it, is the great granddaughter of the original 18 that were reintroduced. And out of that original 18, they got 9,000 that they started spreading across the country. And so, the ferret program has been very successful, and we just hope that it's equally successful here in our state at the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge, and we have a great population.
And it's a permanent display. Most of the places that have had reintroduction didn't get. The zoo, the Denver Zoo, actually helped put it together. So, it's the only indoor-outdoor type of environment, and it's a full enclosure like you would see at the zoo. So, please go out and look at the new exhibit and the opportunity to see this creature in their natural habitat. Now, if there be no further business to come before the city of Commerce City, this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you all.